That's our biggest problem.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Keystone Heights Special Council Meeting. It is September 29th. We appreciate you guys all being here. I would like to put this meeting to order and start out with our dedication, Mr. Knight.
Fair enough. Father, I thank you so much for this day that you've given us. I thank you for the rain that we got the last few days. We're thankful for always providing for us. So I ask that you give us wisdom tonight as we go through our town's decisions. We're just getting council wisdom to make decisions for it and just be with us tonight. Or help us to be understanding or help us to do your will in all that we do. We love you and pray.
Amen. Vice Mayor Kessler, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, can I get a little?
This way. Captain Knight.
Present.
Councilman Lavedeske.
Present.
Mayor Rudolph.
Present.
Councilman Walsh.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Kessler. Here. Madam Mayor, you have four.
Well, thank you. Great. And thank you, Vice Mayor Kessler, for handling things while I was gone. It's wonderful to be back. Look at that. It's great to be back, trust me. We have time, but it's wonderful to be here. So the first thing we have, Action Adams Number Five, is our fiscal year 25-26 property tax millage rate hearing. This is the final reading. This is ordinance 613-25-26 millage document. I would entertain a motion to read ordinance 2025-613 by title. Can I get a second?
Do you want to make a motion, sir?
I'll second for discussion. Do you want to read by title?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I think you need to have a little call vote and then read it by title.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we did a second and then we just call for a vote.
Unless you want to discuss reading by title.
But I had to read it down.
A motion to read only by title. That's the motion. It's not to approve it.
Correct. Correct.
Do you want to call it up?
Can I call for a vote? You're going to read my question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
What's that?
Ordinance number 20.5-613, ordinance of the City of Keystone Heights letting the ad-hoc property tax millage rate for municipal purposes on all taxable property within the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, stating the percentage by which the millage to be letting exceeds the rollback rate, providing effective date.
Okay. This public hearing is to present the final millage and budget of the City of Keystone Heights to the public for comment, questions, and review, and to make changes if desired by the City Council. The process for budget adoption is detailed precisely in the Florida statutes, and we must comply with those directives. The very first order of business is to discuss the final millage, the rollback rate, millage rate, and the reasons for the increase in ad-hoc tax revenues. I will now turn this over for discussion to our city manager to make sure that we meet all required communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The name of the taxing authority is the City of Keystone Heights, Florida. The city council's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 reflects a millage rate of 3.6422. That millage can be compared to the current millage rate, which is 3.8847, and to the rollback millage rate, which is 3.0642. The rollback rate is a calculation which brings in the same tax dollars next year as for this year excluding new construction, additions, deletions, annexations, and improvements. I'm required by state statute to present the increase of the final millage compared to the rollback rate. To state, excuse me, I restate that. I'm required by statute to state the percent increase of the final millage compared to the rollback rate. That proposed rate is an 18.86% increase over the rollback rate. The city's overall final budget is $4,539,963. That total breaks down as follows. In the general fund, $2,299,888. In the infrastructure fund, $1,220,684. In the community redevelopment agency trust fund, $490,142. And finally, in the cemetery fund, $529,249. This budget increase proposed for this year is directly attributed to a cost increase of supplies, materials, and services. The rollback rate of 3.0624 mentioned earlier is calculated incorrectly and locked in a state calculation system on the 4th of August, 2025. State statute does not allow us to correct the error during this truth in millage cycle. A rollback rate that generates nearly the same amount of tax revenue as last year is this year's final rate of 3.6422. The final rate of 3.6422 is lower than last year and one of the lowest rates in northeast Florida. The final budget reflects the draft budget discussed and considered during the recent budget committee meeting and now reviewed by the city council, which is being presented today, September 29th, 2025, for a second public hearing and adoption.
Madam Mayor.
We will now open the public hearing on the final millage. Are there any public comments?
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any comments, and I'm not seeing anyone in the audience who looks like they want to step up and make any comments.
Close the public hearing, and then I will entertain a motion for approval.
I noticed a discrepancy in these two numbers.
We should discuss that after we have the motion.
Okay.
Let's have a motion and then a motion seconded and discussion.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So I entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion, I already wrote the budget.
No, millage.
Oh.
Sorry.
The military.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's a discussion. Go ahead.
So do you want to talk about the first page?
Sure. I noticed a discrepancy in the erroneous rollback rate numbers. And what the city manager just read in the first paragraph, it's showing us 3.0642. And in the second paragraph, it's showing it 3.0624. I'm not sure one of them is right, but...
No, let me check. What kind of ones are these?
Actually, there's a third number.
Oh, good.
Yes. So just to fill the mayor in on our last meeting on September 18th, we had a long discussion. We had two, three different votes, and this council was pretty divided about whether we should keep it at 3.88 or reduce it to a rollback rate. And the discrepancy comes into what is the rollback rate? And in the end, we accepted that 3.6422 was the rollback rate, the correct one, and that's what we voted on. However, since that meeting, it has been discovered that even that rate is not correct. And if we do that millage, 3.6422, we will actually raise taxes by a dollar value of $3,672 across all of our citizens. And I will mention what my colleague, Mr. Knight, said. It doesn't want taxes to go up on our citizens by even one dollar. So if we were to do as he suggested to keep it even, we have to adopt a rate of 3.06073 or less. That is, with all the new data, the true rollback rate, wherein our citizens pay exactly the same number of dollars this coming year as they did last year. And so that's really where our decision is. Do we keep it at 3.6422, which is by legal the maximum we can do now, and have a small increase for our citizens? Do we go to 3.6073, which means everybody's dollar value is exactly the same? Or do we reduce it forever and let our citizens pay less in property taxes? And so let me share with you a couple other relative figures. I looked at what are our reserves? Because to me, looking at how much we have planned to spend, how much we have planned to come in for income, plus the current reserves we have, we put those all together. At the end of next year, what do our reserves look like and what should they look like? And so if you go by the Government Financial Officers Association recommendation, they say that 15% to 35% of our operating budget should be in reserves. Well, if you take our total $2.2, $2.3 billion budget, subtract out the reserves, and just look at the $1.5 million of expenditures, that's what's truly in our budget, and you say what's 35% of that, comes out to be about $540,000. So we're having in reserve the maximum recommendation by the Government Financial Officers Association. 35% is the maximum. We put $540,000 in reserves. Under the budget, as our city manager has put together, we have over $690,000 in reserves. So we're above what we need to be by $150,000. And so if we were to cut $3,672 out of the budget, it would represent less, or about 0.2% of our total budget, which is in the noise if someone sneezes and our budget changes by that much. It's nothing. And so if we truly want to say, and I want to still your words, if we do not increase taxes of our citizens by one dollar, then we need to go with a millage rate of 3.6073 or less. That's the background that you were here. I'm sorry I spoke so long. I probably said too much.
No, it's okay. I do have options to make, so I appreciate the detail. Great. So the rates and the discrepancy and those rollover just for public information, those provided to describe, the county, is it there?
It's calculated in a system called Truth in Millage. There's an online spreadsheet system we fill out. I'll just make the administrative correction. The rollback millage rate that's correct is the one that was in the first paragraph, 3.0642. And my stated comment down below, when I said the difference between that and the existing rate is some serious solid dyslexia flipping the four and the two. So I should have stated 3.0642 the second time.
Okay. So 3.6422, correct? Can we just say 3.6?
You added an extra two, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So clarify, 3.06 number is from August 4th.
Correct.
The 3.64 number is from September 18th.
That's the correct number?
No.
Correct. We have a different rates we're discussing, Madam Mayor.
Different events. So 3.06 was August 4th.
Correct.
3.64 is what we decided on, on September 18th.
Okay.
3.6073 is a new number today.
Okay.
But the mayor is right where the 3.6422 is what we thought the actual rollback rate should have been at the last year. True. On September 18th. That's what we brought up. And then tossed in a little nutsies explaining that that number really should have been 3.6073.
Now, how did that?
It's a difference. When you go to, what, without, 8.10 of, there's a set of instructions when we draft the newspaper article that announces a tax increase. That document told me, hey, go grab this number, which is the number you saw in the newspaper, 379,000, and I forget the, I had chosen a different spreadsheet number to calculate the rollback rate, and so it was off by decimals, that $3,600.
Okay. So that 3,000 is about three bucks per taxpayer?
And what I meant another is it's per property in the city.
I know it's not either way, but if somebody wants to make that claim accurate, I suppose that's the thing to do. It brings up another question that I, which I thought of the last time we met. The, what do you call them? The grants, and saw they were restoring. And some of them, as I recall, require the city to put up some funds. And take one, I think one was $800,000 for...
Seventy-two grand.
Okay. And the state government, federal government office of grant, would request you require the city to put up, was it 10% of that?
There was no, in that particular grant application, there was no direct cost share. I just assumed that we may, you're about 20%, no, I still asked for a waiver based on the city's...
Oh, I remember that one.
Based on the city's rural distribution.
Are there other grants that you anticipate that would require the city shares some of that cost?
I think the polite way of saying is, for all the grants that we applied for, I built into the budget either in the general fund or CRA or infrastructure, the cost share, if the state asked for a cost share. It was all built into the budget. However, what's not built into the budget is any assumption that we get any grant funds. So it was conservative in that nature.
Okay. That's right.
So if we wouldn't be able to get it in the budget, we would not require some of these reserve funds to apply that grant.
So understand, a couple things. As you move through the budget here, what will end up happening is there are projects that just don't get done. I mean, they may be something that you parlayed for a budget, and then when a grant application comes through, you'll correctly ask whether or not there's a corresponding match. Depending on what that match is, you'll make a decision as to whether or not we will submit for that grant. You'll know whether or not it's in the budget or not, and you can make a decision accordingly.
Okay. And there's enough lead time to, between the application and the reward, to address that. Okay. I was afraid we'd be short of ourselves if we erode that, the current reserves. It sounds like not.
I would like to say, we are not boxed in by this budget. This is our plan, but if six months from now we want to change it, we can do that. We can vote to change the budget. So this is not the end-all, be-all, final say.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'd be on the flip side.
Yeah. I appreciate your question, because, you know, in first reading, you glance at it, it seems like we're obligating to throw our reserves at the wall if we don't get it. But anyway, I think we've got that action.
Okay, thank you.
So the rate we're talking about then is the 3.6073? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. So right now, the motion is to approve the ordinance, which is the 2025-613. So that rate right now is the 3.6422. So if the desire of the council is to approve a different rate, there will have to be an amendment to the motion, an amendment to the second. What the city attorney has outlined is the state procedure. We had no choice. We had to do it this way.
Okay. We can't go higher.
We can't go higher, which is ten-year-old. If we can, and even if we all agree somehow before the meeting that 3.6073 was what we wanted to do, the city manager cannot change the ordinance. It must be 6.3, or 6.32. Yeah, that one. Wait, hold on. We're all getting 3.6, not 6.3. Right, 3.6422. Right. He cannot change that. That's what we had to go on. Okay. Because, well, that's what's advertised. Now, because that's what's advertised, you can go lower, you just cannot increase any rollback rate.
We can do that tonight, correct? To the 3.6422.
Now, what I'll have to do, if the city council does choose to go lower than what's currently drafted in the ordinance of 3.6422, is I'll have to go into the spreadsheet mode and crank all these numbers, make sure that the budget's balanced, so I'll change the, it'll change the income, I've got to figure out what that does to the budget. Likely, if, the easy way to solve it, and I think Councilman Lavedeske was mentioning, was just change the amount that goes out as available in reserves to balance the budget. And then I'll restate the rate and the total value of the budget to meet state statutes, if that's the direction that the council would want to go in.
So all we need now, unless there's more discussion, is an amendment. All right. I'll see what the council wants to do by floating the amendment. I'd like to amend ordinance 613 on millage for fiscal year 25-26 by a new millage rate of 3.6073. Second.
Can you just catch me? Can I get a bit?
Aye.
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 Recapitulay.
Your urging, your...
All I know is I've moved down a lot of millage rate, but I don't think I have the right one on there yet, still.
Well, you know...
3.6073.
Yes. So my comments, and I did look at their meeting, I did my little bit of research all the way back to '23, '23, '24, and at that time, we were at 4.29. And then in '24, '25, we went to 3.88, which was a rollover rate. I think the 4.2 has been held at that same number for like eight or nine years, something like that. But then we went to the 3.88 in '24, '25, and then we were looking at 3.64, and again, these numbers are not numbers that we completely responsible, that we, you know, manage. We get the information, and then he goes to it on the spreadsheets to calculate and all that, which is a big, it's a huge job. But I just want to say that we have been very, very physically conservative for our citizens. Also, we all live in the city as well, and I guess I look at the differences, like you said, $7 per household. I think at the last meeting we made commented $12, $14 difference per household or per year. Again, the City of Keystone Heights, westerns, right? About five or six hundred homesites. And I look at, that difference was around $20,000 or something a year at that time of first rate. And of course, I look at that like, okay, I know it doesn't seem like, some people may think it's a lot of money, and it may be, but it's all relative. So I look at all the things, and I look at our strategic plan, all the things that we're trying to do to improve our experience of living in the city. A good example is the beautiful mural that's just been completed. That wasn't free. $20,000 right about, to the support, 160. These little things add up. And I just want to continue to be able to have enough money for us to continue with our vision, which I think we have a lot of things coming down the pike, which I think is one of our biggest commitments in this role, is to be responsible, physically responsible, but also give everyone a good, a great experience, a quality experience when they come here. So that's just my position on it. Just wanted to give comments.
So Madam Mayor, if you'll indulge me, if we could just clean up a couple of things. So from the time that we read the script as to the percentage increase over the rollback rate with the amendment to adopt the lower rate, our city manager's calculated what the correct percent increase over the rollback rate is, which is? And with, so that's over the incorrectly calculated rate that we used early in August. With that, I ask you to reopen public hearing on the new motion, just in case there's any public comment.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
Okay. Presumably none of that changes any of the votes that were just cast.
No public comment.
So next up is budget.
Do we need to, I'm ready to recapitulate, restate the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
The millage passed.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. 3.6073. Okay. Great. All right. So item six is our fiscal year 25-26 budget hearing final meeting, ordinance 2025-614, fiscal year 25-26 budget. This budget includes our general fund budget, our infrastructure budget, the CRA, or the community redevelopment budget, cemetery budget.
I'd like to move that we read in title only the ordinance of the, for fiscal year 25-26.
Any comment?
I want a favor.
Want a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So ordinance 2025-614, ordinance for the purpose of adopting the final budget for the City of Keystone Heights, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, and providing effective date.
I'd like to also open it up now for public hearing on the final budget.
And before we do that, could I have the city manager explain kind of what the changes to the budget are going to be based on the newly adopted...
Okay. So the overall change, the total budget, when you look at all four funds combined, is now... Okay. So the total combined budget will now be $4,536,472. I think that's all we're required is to talk, the overall change. That entire change occurred in the general fund, and the new income for the general fund, let me just kind of walk you through it real quick. When you change, when we changed the millage rate to 3.6073, that's a difference of, well, the total tax revenue at that point is roughly the 379,800, depending on some rounding, like without any digits, it's 379,821. And then you multiply that times 0.95 to reduce, to make sure we only budget to 95%. That one's catching me scratching my head. That changes the total income from property taxes down to $360,830. And that created a offset or a non-balanced budget to the tune of $3,491. I subtracted that out of the reserves. Reserves changed to coming out at the end of the budget, of the current draft budget, reserves of $690,560. That is the impact of the changes to the rates that the city council just voted.
Okay.
So Madam, would you reopen the public hearing?
Would I open up the public hearing? Any comments? Okay. Close public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Can we discuss one?
I'm sorry.
You'll make the motion. We have the motion first, right. And I would imagine your motion is more to adopt the budget as amended. I'd like to move that we adopt the 25-26 budget as amended and just stated by the city manager. I'll second the motion.
Any comments?
So if somebody else wants to speak first, I'm sorry. Okay. I just would like to first thank the city manager, our bookkeeper, and all the others who've worked hard on this. This is a very difficult thing to do, as you can see by all the changes, and I've been over the numbers, and he spent hours with me, and everything seems to change on a regular basis, and it's going to go back and redo all kinds of stuff. And so my first comment is thank you for all of your hard work. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Just because, again, I spent a couple hours today. I came in this morning and got 169 pages of printouts, and I went through 169 pages today.
You gotta call me.
I'll charge you to my cell phone. Whenever he's getting paid.
Yeah, I got nothing better to do, you know? And so just to show it my outings here, if you take away the reserves or the carry forward, as it's called, our planned general fund budget, this is not the infrastructure, not the CRA, not the cemetery, but our general fund, we're going to spend one and a half million dollars next year. And out of that, what I found interesting was that personnel costs are just over a million dollars. So two-thirds of our expense is personnel. And I sat back and I just had thought about that, and you know what? And I, I sat back and I just had thought about that, and you know what? Our most valuable assets are our people.
Correct.
They are what really makes this city go. If we don't have the right people here, we have all kinds of problems. And so I went, I'm good with that, that's, that's a good thing, we're doing the right thing. And so I just wanted to share that with you all. Other than that, I didn't see, I mean, there were some minor tweaks here and there from September 18, but there was nothing that surprised me, nothing that was a major change that would cause me to bring it up here. I just want to share with you my review, and that I would recommend we approve this budget.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll say that I agree with Councilman Lamedeski, I think it is a good budget. It's an extremely complicated process, especially to ask that we not, when most cities are raising taxes for all intents and purposes, that we try and at least put our rates at the same level or have a rollback rate that works for our residents. It is, personally for me, it's a philosophical matter, but it also is practical. They'll accommodate when we do need to, to ask people for more money here, the subject to sewage is tens of millions of dollars, and, you know, eight hundred thousands have dropped in the bucket with the big skin of things. And so that day will come, maybe, but it lets people know at that point that we have done everything we can with grants, other things, we're just in, you know, we're in section A1 of even getting that process. So I'll also say that I have asked Mr. Booth to include a few things in the budget, I think he's put them in there to make sure that some of the priorities of other members of the council get done. So since I can't tell you privately any of this, I'll say that publicly. So people should not take anything we've said about taxes or budget to see, to see if there's any disagreement, be where we are, and be working together in our own place to see if the city does well. And so I think it's a great budget, I'll be voting for it.
I'd like to echo, I guess, my thanks to Councilman Lamedeski for tackling this in detail with Gusto, and he's providing some valuable insight and service to the council and the community in writing through all 292 pages. I don't know anybody in the room who would volunteer for that, and he's done good. I'd also echo, I guess, my thanks and recognize Mr. Booth and his staff for tackling this new process. They're all doing this, nobody, nobody in the room can accomplish this before, and it's not easy task, it took a long time, huge learning curve for all of them, and they attacked it with energy, and with Gusto, and it done really well to make all this happen, meet the states and their data, get all their advice, which is, I recall, it might, did not always happen in the past, it's happening now, a minute ago. Just a handful of folks to thank for that.
Councilman Lamedeski, on behalf of the staff, thank you, and I will tell you that it does up one's game when they know that Councilman Lamedeski's coming behind checking that.
Well, you know, I want to sincerely thank you, Jamie, and your entire staff, everyone who's pitched in to support this, and certainly all the council members, and all their efforts in the background to make us get to this point. And when you commented again about the salaries being 60% more of our budget, it wasn't like that two years ago, y'all. And we were losing people because we couldn't pay salaries, we didn't have physicians, it wasn't a happy space here, unfortunately. But I will tell you that we dug into it, we looked at it, we found us, we found money to be able to hire, not only at the good salaries, but for right people, which is why you see everything that goes on here in this community is, well, the reason is everything that happens in this building, because if it's not happening, this building is not happening. It's not just this area. So I commend you all for a great job, and we appreciate all of it. Okay, so next, we did vote on that, flipped it?
Yeah, you got a call vote, Mayor.
Well, that's not good, sorry. Okay, can I give a vote? All favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I get a unanimous vote.
Yep.
Do you want it?
Next is, item seven is our fiscal year 2526 property and workman's compensation insurance. This includes?
Item seven, before we get to item seven, our agenda's a little out of order. We need to have general public comment. So because you have the public hearings, the public hearings have their own public comment, we would normally have public comment on the rest of the agenda before you take any sort of votes.
Oh, okay. So that's for what else we were getting ready to cover?
Everything else on the agenda.
Okay. So for the rest of the agenda, which is item seven through 15 or something like that, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, we didn't have any forms submitted, and I've not seen anybody in the audience who looks like they want to jump up.
Okay. Now we can move forward to seven? Yes. All right. So the property and workman's compensation insurance for 2526 has been reviewed, and I do have some notes on that.
Mayor, if you'd like me to summarize, I'm happy to do that.
That'd be great.
Kind of live this one. Just, I'll, I'll tell it in a story format. So each, just so everyone understands, we do our property and workman's compensation on an annual basis. So as we move into the new fiscal year, we sign on or renew with the company for the entire year, and so we only get one crack at it a year to assess our costs and where we want to go. About a month ago, we received, well, about a month ago, I reached out to FMIT, Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and knowing that we were about, we were roughly around $79,000 a year is what our rate had been, reached out to them and asked, hey, can you bring that rate down? It seems to be a little bit high. About a week or two later, we got an email that said, your projected rate for next year is going to be $99,000. Staff and I engaged and were able to bring that down to about $86,000, and that was about as low as it was going to get, from what we could tell. At that time, we had a meeting with Brown and Brown, who's representing for today, and they offered to give us a quote. I did some research and worked with, with Rich and what the process would be for that. Clay County has an existing contract with Brown and Brown, I apologize, there's another formal name for the business that, that you'll see in the documents that we attached. And so Brown and Brown's process, they are an insurance broker, they go out and compete their, for, through multiple insurance companies, and Brown and Brown typically goes with PGIT, which is, well, I guess currently is going for governmental insurance cost for PGIT. That quote came in, in the low 60s. I gave FMIT, our existing provider, another opportunity to assess their, their quote. Their quote came down to, hold on, FMIT landed at 62.5 on rounding, and PGIT came in with a final quote of $61,000. So if you look at that spread, about $25,000 difference of where we could have been, actually from just the $86,000. And so with a lower bid from FMIT, a contract, or excuse me, a properly competed contract, I am recommending that the city council allow me to sign on to a new agreement contracting document with, with Brown and Brown slash PGIT at the roughly $61,500 they're surrounding in there, dollars for the next year, that's locked in for the next two years. So that's a quick summary of the documents that, that were in there. I will, I will note, we did do one addition to the, the agenda today, just to make sure we had a full file, and that is adding in Clay County's request for proposal, as well as Clay County's award to Brown and Brown, which was, I don't know, six to nine months ago, just to make sure that our, our record was fully clear on, on how that, that action was competing. I'll have to answer your questions if the council may have. And, and so our recommendation would be the council authorized the city manager to enter into a new agreement with, with Brown and Brown slash PGIT.
So do you have a motion for that? Do you want to give a motion?
I'll second.
Any comments?
I, I would like to say, if we hadn't done anything, they would have charged us $99,000, and to me, that's gouging. Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and only until they got a competitive bid, did they drop from 99 to 62, 63. And so this is entirely because of our city manager and his work. And so I want to thank you for saving the city more than $30,000, just by making a few phone calls, and I would thank Brown and Brown for being here and providing that competition, and I hope people go with you. That's what I want.
I just want to say, I mean, that's how we can drop the tax here a little bit, just for the work to go in.
Did I mention that at the end of the day?
I knew about that, that's, that's just amazing, you know? They put the work behind, they do that. Pretty proud of them.
Pretty soon they'll look pay for themselves.
They'll pay for the tax cuts.
Any comments, Mr. Mike?
No, well, yeah, I'll say, I'll say so, I was shocked when I heard about what they tried to do with the insurance. You know, I don't think I should publicly say what I think about those people, but our new insurance company won't follow suit. So look forward to what y'all are doing, appreciate your work.
All right, can we give a votes?
Aye.
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 Thank you so much, Jamie, for doing this, and also run a record for being a great person. Appreciate that much. All right, so next is item eight, redefining the greater Keystone Heights in chapter nine, article, section nine dash 32, Keystone Heights Airport Authority. Is this something you want to?
Yes, ma'am, I'll tap in there again.
And we also have our director of the authority.
Yes, we do.
All right, so as part of, so we recently, I said recently, two months ago, had a board member resign from one of the city seats of the Keystone Heights Airport Authority. And part of researching and soliciting for potential board members, I started researching what our requirements were, and, and so I'll just, I'll kind of summarize, and this was in the agenda summary, but I want to, I'll go through it. If, if you look in our charter, the charter simply states that the Keystone Heights Airport Authority Board is going to consist of currently five city seats, and then one Bradford County seat, one Clay County seat, a total of seven seats. It defines, I don't think, I would say, it uses the term for the city seats, the greater Keystone Heights, I think it may say area, the word after greater Keystone Heights changes throughout the document. And so I wanted to understand where that was defined, and it does say in the charter, hey, go look further in the ordinances, and in our chart, our chapter nine, article one, section nine dash 32, A1, defines of, it's, it hasn't changed with a recent update to five members, but it does state, the four members are appointed by the city council from interested people who live within the greater Keystone Heights community, and in parentheses, the greater Keystone Heights community is defined as people who own addresses in Keystone Heights, Florida, meaning both the city and adjoining county areas. That can be a little confusing, but the simple way to think of that is, you got to have a Keystone Heights address with a 32656 zip code to qualify for a city, for a city seat of one of the five city seats per, per charter and ordinances. What we are finding is since we've advertised the one vacant seat, and we've had one application from outside of that particular area, someone in Melrose, we've had one application from someone inside the current definition with a 32656 address. Over those last two months, I've been a little focused on budget, but also not too keen to bring you just one candidate, I want to make sure that the city council has a good candidate pool to fill the vacant seat. And so what I'm proposing, and this is, there had been verbal discussion of what the ordinances said, but once you, when you actually look at the ordinance, it's not there, but some people had said, or they thought it was a 10-mile radius from any point on the Keystone Heights boundary or city limits. And what I'm proposing to the city council is the potential that you direct us to rewrite the ordinance, not the charter, because we can't do that without citizens' vote, but rewrite the ordinance which defines the city seat, or redefines the greater Keystone Heights area or community, as, as it's drafted right here, a 10-mile radius from the intersection of Highway 21 and 100, which is a very certain spot, and it's really easy to drop a radius from, and that's what this graphic shows. At 10 miles, the area of the greater Keystone Heights, if this was the definition, the city council liked it, but it changed to, would go north to just below Stark, that Stark in the upper left-hand kind of quadrant, and goes through Camp Landing, out to the right, well, and then down past Melrose in the south. If you overlay this with the 32656 map, which unfortunately I didn't get into this document, 32656 would be completely covered in the, the lower, what they've, you know, the western quadrants and the southern quadrants, but that northwestern quadrant, it wouldn't quite grab all the elements of 32656 by maybe a mile. And so when I was discussing this with Rich earlier, he said it might make sense just to, it's, one of the ways I said was to, we keep the 32656 and the radius. One simple way to change this proposal might just be to make it 11 miles, and that would, from micro assessment of underfall, it would completely encompass 32656, and have one clean definition of the quote of greater Keystone Heights area, it's something geographically certain that we could look to, and broaden the availability of potential more members to the seat. If you look at, if you look at 32656, it pretty much only goes to the east of this, let's say the eastern portion of the city circle. Everything to the west, if you look at Santa Fe Land, anything out there, it's almost all cut out. And it's not perfect, but that's, that's pretty much what you're losing, and we only use 32656, thank you though. And if you look, so this is 32656, you can see where Keystone Heights is in the lower left-hand quadrant, you can kind of see Camp Landing outlined there, and then 32656 kind of keeps going up further north. That's that area that wouldn't be fully encompassed by 10 miles, I think if we go 11 or 12, it would fully encompass 32656. A lot of words for a recommendation that y'all, that the city council direct city staff to redraft the, or go through the process to redraft the ordinance, to define it at a radius of, let's say, up to 12 miles.
Can you keep that up there, vote, please?
Thank you for pulling that up, though.
General Alfred, would you, you got any comments?
I'm not sure that I totally understand it all still, to be honest. My philosophy would be that since the Keystone Heights Airport really is the only airport that services both Clay County and Bradford County, and given my own personal philosophy that I would rather cast a large net and then discriminate from whatever applicants can, you know, end up applying, I would, I don't, I don't understand the 10-mile limit thing. To me, if they're in Bradford and Clay Counties, they could go all the way up to Green Cove Springs, or Middleburg, or to Stark. I think that those candidates could be just as valuable members of our board as people that live more strictly or confined to the Keystone Heights area. So I would only give you my philosophy that I would rather cast a large net and then allow you guys the discrimination of who you think should be based on all of the different qualities that, that that person might bring. So if someone in Middleburg, or Green Cove, or Stark do just as good a job as someone who's living in, within a 10-mile, that, that confined radius just seems unnecessary to me. That's just my thought process. Does that make sense? So, so that would be my approach. The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about is, as you confine that pool to a 10-mile radius, you also limit the number of people that really have solid knowledge of airport issues and operations and, and those kind of things. So I think we potentially screen out some very valuable candidates that might be, you know, 10 miles further away, but still have the same interest in what's for the best of, you know, the Keystone Heights Airport as someone who actually lives in a small radius around the city. So I don't know how that translates into actually what is charter, and what is ordinance, and what could be changed by just a vote versus having to go to a, you know, to another referendum, but that's just kind of my philosophy on how I would prefer to see it. I think you'd find better candidates if you could open the pool, and then even people that weren't necessarily inside 10 miles could still bring, I think, a lot of value to the, to the board. Any questions for me on that?
Rich, can you weigh in?
So, and for the mayor, the general...
So, and for the mayor, the general, a lot of the concept or discussion that's been discussed in the past is limiting the geographic location, because as you exceed that geographic location, there are other airports, and the concern is that maybe the allegiances would not always make decisions in the best interest of the Keystone Heights Airport, regardless of their qualifications.
Sure. And that's why I think, that's why that you guys have to make that call when you decide who you're going to pick, right? But, I mean, if you had ten people that maybe were scattered around a little bit further than that ten-mile radius, but you still felt, based on the interviews and their qualifications, that they would be a better candidate than someone who happens to live inside ten-mile radius, um, it's, it's your choice still, it's just widening the pool of candidates to make, to allow you that discretion to determine who really is going to be the best candidate based on whatever particular needs the airport has at that time.
Not to pick on anyone, but like, for example, the airport board had Chad from Sharp, who had no aviation experience, however, you know, based on his planning and engineering, he was still a valuable member of the board, so.
Absolutely, yeah, there's a lot of different qualific, qualities that could be beneficial to the board, and, uh, there may not necessarily be someone in the ten-mile radius that would fit it as well as someone, you know, in another town slightly outside of there.
See, that's what I was thinking, why is it, you know, why not twenty, or get more people... I don't know what to do. People more, I want to use the word educated, but that's not what I want, but more in other areas that can bring it into this area, you know, because you can't just take a pool out of here, you're just going to have these people taking it. It's just like if we're all just hanging out right here. You get more people from other areas, brings in...
Diversity of talent.
More talent from different places, you get other things. Well, why aren't we doing it? Well, we never thought of that, because...
There's been a lot of, so, there's been a lot of discussion on this topic over the years, and, you know, a lot of it comes back to Councilman Moganowski's made comments, I think, on your first term, um, just about how the county treats us as a municipality, and as a result of that, there's concern that we didn't want the county running our airport. So I'm not suggesting that one way is right or another, I'm just trying to give you some background as to kind of what some of the discussions have been in the past.
Really, just with, um, expanding it to the three-two-six-five-six, at least when I did my map of that zip code, it was about seventy square miles, it goes all the way to McRae Elementary, which is still bigger than I think we've been looking at, correct? Than what we've been looking at with the radius.
I'm sorry, it, it currently is three-two-six-five-six, and Mayor York writes it's roughly seventy square miles outlanded in red right here.
Right, about sixteen thousand residents. So, you know, what we had before, though, I think it was, um, the five place seats, um, did that mean that they had to live in the city, or exactly, I can't remember, I think we had a...
The greater area.
Okay, that it was a smaller radius than what we were talking about.
I, Rich, it's kind of different.
Oh, it's a different map, a different map?
Right, because you could be in Melrose, and you're, you don't have Keystone Heights address.
Right, right.
But you could be all the way up to Camp Landing, where sixteen and twenty-one it is, and you still have Keystone Heights address. So it's odd where, you could technically be closer, but you don't qualify.
I know a friend that lives on twenty-one B, she has Keystone Heights address that she's referencing. Why isn't that lying?
The same also applies in, like, Stark, I mean, Stark's closer than some of the areas all the way up twenty-one that still have the same postal address.
And the air, yeah, dirt, the airport has a Stark neighborhood, yes.
Because a portion of it is in Bradford County, a strong portion of it's in Bradford, even though the city owns the land.
Yeah.
So it kind of goes to my point, I'm less, less concerned about the geography than I am candidates, um, qualifications as what I call stakeholders, that put their interest in the, the airport as a public utility and as a, a biz, an operating business that benefits the city, the community, and, and the region. We've seen, I think, and heard presentations both at the airport board meetings, as well as here, upon some of the, um, some of the business opportunities and interest that businesses have expressed in the airport, in the airport property. I think we have a much larger pool of, I'll say, of candidate stakeholders than, than the area three-two-six-five, oh, much less encompassed. Um, I don't know, if, on the one hand, I understand the, the geographic concern, we don't want, uh, for example, uh, people in Green Cove Springs, uh, or other communities that have their own airport, uh, advocated for something.
Maybe just like the generals, if that's for us to weed them out.
Exactly, and I think that's, that's where, if we, it's a kind of a typical dilemma, when you make the rules too finely grained, then there's no job to do, and I think we're elected to do a job that's much, that, that is more than just geographical in store. I think there are people out there, I've heard several mention, that have interests, that experience, and backgrounds, and so on, that can benefit the airport, benefit the airport community, the pool of airport stakeholders, including potential business, and, uh, they don't live anywhere near three-two-six-five-six. But they're close enough if, if they can, you know, if they want to commit to making regular meetings and so on, then God bless them, invite them to fly.
Any other comments?
I have a lot, actually. Um, this is far more complex in my mind, and this needs a multi-pronged approach. If we don't do this right, we will lose. And I'll use an example of Elatua County Crystal Light Camp. Um, that was part of the original airport property, and that should have come to the city of Keystone Heights. But Elatua County recognized the value of that very beautiful piece of property, and they wiggled their way in and got the property for us to never have again. Um, I think that if we don't protect our interests in the airport, that can happen again. And so, um, but we also have to recognize that we are not getting good quality candidates for the board. So we can't just sit and do nothing, all right? And, and so my, my recommendation, and I'll throw out, I think it's three different things here, and then the fellow council members can, can do what you want with it. First of all, next year, begins next year, we're supposed to do a charter review. And so if that is, uh, something we'd like to change in the charter, make one of those positions, for example, a Bradford County position. That would open up the pool, not all five positions, but one of those positions to Bradford County. Um, there is an argument, and I, I will, uh, I won't say I don't like it, but I understand it, that Bradford County should have more representation than just one seat on the board. There's seven seats on the board, and they're two-thirds of the property, and they have a lot of stuff going on out there, and so I, I can see why they would want more representation. But I do not want to say all five positions can be filled potentially by Bradford County people. I do not want that to happen.
That's my theory.
Um, and the ten-mile limit, actually, Bo, let me ask you, I want, do want to come back to this. The ten-mile limit, I just want to point out, brings in Waldo, Hampton on the far west, all of Melrose, and way far south there, if people have no clue we even have an airport, goes to Putnam Hall in Putnam County, all the way up to Grandin and further. We're talking about communities that are way outside Keystone Heights. They don't have anything to do with us. We, we don't do anything with them. All right, let's go back to next. I have, though, looked at down near Melrose, can you scroll down to three-two-six-six-six, please? There it is, three-two-six-six-six, okay? Now, they are much more part of the Lakes community. In fact, if you look at the Lake Region Monitor, and you talk about articles, if it's Lake Region, it's three-two-six-five-six or three-two-six-six-six. Those are the communities most commonly put together. And so when I look at the census data, like the mayor has, about Clay County residents living in those two zip codes, it is roughly eighteen thousand now. Okay, that's a good pool to draw from for airport management, airport board. Um, and so to me, if they are in Clay County, and they have a three-two-six-six-six, I, I think they ought to be eligible. You know, they're, they're far closer than, than a whole bunch of other people, and they're more like us.
They got their own airport.
They have a field, it's not like...
Yeah, it's, Melrose land, it's...
Yeah, it's not a field. Well, can't buy gas there. They don't have an airport manager except someone part-time.
But what you're saying is they identify more with us.
Yes.
Yeah, they border right up to us.
Yes.
I knew a lot of pilots out there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've all built airplanes.
You know, and the Gainesville Airport is not far away, but we really have nothing to do with them. Um, and there's Cecil Field to the north, and there's the Green Cove Private Field to the east, um...
They're all quite a distance.
They are, and I would just caution, opening up all five of these positions to this ten-mile limit that includes communities that should not be included.
Do you think it includes it, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, the ten-mile limit includes four different counties. Can you imagine people from Elatua County sitting on our airport board and telling us what we should do? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, again, I think it's, it's our job to determine who's, who's got the best combination credentials and interest in that airport, our airport.
I, I agree, but we, our, our knowledge is limited, and the more local they are, it's a better chance we have of knowing who they really are.
Disagreement there, provided that we can find people that are remotely qualified to be involved in running an airport, in airport business, making, making decisions.
So I would ask you this, what's more important, filling this slot with anyone? Filling this slot with someone local? Because I'll go back to my other examples, when we had the Parks people come in with the Parks Plan, how many of their recommendations did we actually adopt? None. When we had the Jacksonville Smart Cities people come in with their Smart Cities Plan, how many of their recommendations did we adopt? None. They don't know us, okay? I want local people to be on our local leadership committees, because they know us, they know what's happening in this community. When we say we want to do a fall festival at the airport, for example, local people know what that means. Someone from Jacksonville has no idea, they're guessing at what that means. So my preference is local people.
I don't disagree with you, Dan, I, I guess I'll just make the point that, that this airport is much more than a local, little, small-town field. It's five thousand, we have two five-thousand-foot projects, and we're going to spend money to, to improve those.
I'm totally with you.
We've got interest in coming, one of, my example was wanting to fly in seven thirty-sevens, build a hangar, and disassemble through, through, exactly, and so that doesn't happen in typical rural country.
Oh, I totally agree. May I interject a couple of things? Um, I don't like the ten-mile radius, because the first thing I thought of was, good Lord, there's Elatua County. The next thing, when I thought about Stark, what they might do to us, I didn't think about Green Cove. Um, I know someone right now that trans P eight pilots, and I'm not going to mention him to the general, I'm sure he'd be great for the board, but, uh, you might court martial him at some point. I'm just honestly afraid to, to mention his name. Um, but I, I kind of, I share Dave's position a little bit with the projects that are going down, just keeping it simple. There's no doubt that General Eifert of the board will need, or probably at some point desire to have people to have specific expertise that, that they might well reside in Orange Park, they might be anywhere for that matter. So I guess my question would be, is do we wait to the charter review process, or can we do it both ways? Can we have a way where we, we favor these zip codes that have been mentioned, what Dana wants? And this is, I think, subject for maybe, um, Mr. Booth, the city attorney, to come in on, but also at the same time, we make some kind of allowance for these cases where we need a board member with specific expertise. So we can have a statute written that favors, take out the circle, favors what we want local, but at the same time, creates a higher barrier, but would allow for us when we need to get those people, when General Eifert of the board comes to us and says we need someone, can we, can we get a compromise there? And it doesn't have to be one or the other, that's what I want to say.
Can I offer to, um, a markup to, um, what the, what Mr. Booth was, uh, proposing, that we allow for exceptions? For ex, for example, um, in a, a new paragraph four, we might say something like, an interesting applicant who does not reside within the, and moderate's, or whatever we establish, may be selected for airport authority membership if, in the judgment of the authority and the city council, the applicant is particularly qualified by virtue of experience and expertise, and could be beneficial to the airport authority. So I think we can, I guess to Dan's, uh, concern, we can kind of constrain the geography and some political risks there, and at the same time, if there's a candidate that comes up, a decent, right person, at the right time, that helps the airport work through some particular issue, might be a former FAA employee or something, who knows, uh, that we allow for that exception.
That's exactly what I think should happen in the charter.
Yeah, in the meantime, in the meantime, we've got to fill a seat. Well, I think we can have all ways.
We'll have to, we'll have to keep trying.
I like the motion that he takes with us, I think our motion would take precedent.
I'll start with that. Because I don't think they have it in the motion right now.
That's correct.
Yeah, so that second...
Any comments?
I missed something.
There, there's a motion to debate, we're delaying.
Delay.
Yes.
To think about it some more.
Right, maybe there should be some more candidates that come in or something.
Does that, are you...
As I understand it, that shouldn't affect our ability to continue to do work, we still have a quorum, you know, with the numbers that we have.
Okay. So, you know, I would say this about my motion, I won't withdraw, I'll keep it as is, if something happens that that changes with their ability to function, I would be in favor of asking the city manager, the mayor, everyone to come into session to do whatever they need to do.
Right now, we're beating at that horse.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not beating it anymore, are we? Good.
Okay.
Good idea.
If I could point out, we're, we're going to get to the charter review, that existing paragraph four, one, I'm setting a one member from the National Guard, I don't think the guard wants to participate.
All right, Councilman, Councilman Watts, I, I'll just jump in. So I think you're referencing, um, the ordinance, which apparently, the, the charter was corrected a year or so ago to make the seats five city seats, Camp Clay County, Bradford County. Unfortunately, it didn't propagate down into our ordinances, and our ordinance still sent us a National Guard seat, but it's, it's overcome by a, a changed charter.
Yeah.
So apologies. And, uh, Madam Mayor, I think still required is a, is a vote on Councilman Mike's motion.
We have a motion?
Do you have a comment? No. Okay, can we get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Just yours.
All right.
Well, the generals have it, though.
We got to have these discussions, and it's, it's helpful to get the guys to understand where the council's at.
And I want to hear everybody's opinion, I really do.
And I think, I think, I like, I really like the idea, like Dan mentioned, that two zip codes right there, focus, because they are local, they touch our borders area, uh, but I think even more focus has to go into the content of the application detail, like criteria. And, um, I think that probably could use some revamping to some degree, and I also, I mean, I even see that with Heritage Commission, the same situation, very similar. So, um, I think we're good to go on that. So I guess maybe we'll have a workshop or something at some point.
I'll, I'll work to get...
Something, we can...
Yeah, I guess we, by consensus, would you like to try to get a workshop scheduled for that, or me to try and just get another proposal just to bring back the city council for action?
Well, unless it's a situation, I guess, that comes up, and then we'd have to do something anyway, what do y'all feel about that?
Just keeping on, you're, we're going to be establishing charter review...
Yes.
Within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that was my general motion, was to allow for that, and let... Yeah, that, that was my general motion was to allow for that unless we have some kind of urgent circumstance.
But you just prepare at our November meeting to set that up so January one, boom, the charter review starts.
I agree.
Is the airport worth it to participate in that? As far as, as it affects their, um, ordinances that affect that?
So, so the charter's different than the ordinances.
Sure.
Um, so the charter review committee will not address ordinances, they're going to address the charter. As far as anyone can participate, what's happened in the past is each council member selects one person. We have the charter review committee, we normally have five. There've been some occasions where we have seven because the council wanted more people involved. Um, and then there's public comment, just like there's public comment to your meetings, there's public comment at every, every charter review meeting. So if there's somebody who wants to bring forward something to be considered, that's always taken into consideration by the, by the committee.
And those charter committee members need to be Kasonite citizens, correct?
Correct.
And so we need to be thinking about who we'd like to ask to do that.
Correct.
Right? Each of us has to find somebody.
Correct. The public to know if anyone in this area supports chickens. Uh, my predecessor sat here and said as long as he lived in the city, uh, that he wasn't going to have chickens in town. So if you didn't like my predecessor, this is your opportunity.
After some reason, I was not where I thought that was going. I'm on the clock, right?
My chickens are delicious.
They weren't for Key West.
All right, Madam Mayor, I think I, I got the guys moving forward to conditions. As long as the city council can start talking to some citizens about charter review committee membership, that'd be great.
Okay.
We can create meetings and we're done by eight o'clock.
Yes. Okay, so next is our city Kasonites twenty twenty-five calendar, updated calendar. And we all have a copy of it. I know it continues to change because we have so many things going on.
Yes, Madam, I should, I'll just jump in and summarize. It was in your packet, I apologize, or was in the, it was published online. Uh, the big changes proposed in there, council?
We put it off on the screen.
Uh, Bo, can you, could you find that bullet? Now, while Bo's trying to do that, I'll, I'll tap dance and talk a little bit. And, and so, uh, Councilwoman Dusky, I believe in our last meeting, you mentioned, hey, six October, our regularly scheduled meeting is just about a week away from holding this meeting. Uh, do we need, do we have that much business? Can we just potentially go ahead and cancel that? Uh, so the, the updated version does strike six October from our regularly scheduled meetings. It also, there's an administrative correction for the Heritage Commission meeting. I forget when it was on there, but it's moved to the twenty-first, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Yes.
Woo! It's good, it's great on me. Make it up for my dyslexia earlier. And the last proposed change, and this is, uh, and I sent it out in the, the update on this weekend, is that we need to sit down and do a site visit, I say sit down, probably walk around and do site visits at the potential museum sites and potential parking sites. I would propose, since we didn't schedule a whole lot in, in November, in December, that we go back and grab the third of November meeting that, that struck. Use that for a traveling workshop to visit potential museum sites and potential parking sites. And, uh, do that at an unusual time of five o'clock because I think the day prior, we have time change. And if we wait till six o'clock, we're going to be walking around in the dark. And so that was a proposal for the city council to consider. There's probably other options in November, but I would like to get after knocking out the strategic plan objective of doing those site visits, uh, with the city council. At some, if, if November would be an ideal time to do that. And if those still working on it?
Well, it's not.
I don't have access to email through these computers.
Oh, okay.
Or talk later on, like, privately, but.
Did that come from front desk or from you? The calendar update?
Uh, it was an edited version that I sent to Wendy in the, um.
Wendy, did you send that out?
Didn't you log it?
It's in the app, it's in the app.
That's what I'm finding.
We're trying to work two different things.
Yeah.
No, no, we can see it.
It's a matter of trying to get it out.
Yeah, we can see it, it's just they can't project.
No worries. Yeah, we'll print the copy.
We can make copies like that. Mayor, would, would y'all like to?
Well, real, real quick, uh, and Madam Mayor, I know we're on microphones and all, but I want to make sure that we're all clear about discussions out there. Want to make sure it's, it's, it's open and loud enough for everybody. Wendy can make a quick photocopy. Oh, and Bo's got it.
All right.
Hey, man, you win.
All right. Okay, so, uh, we're over on the red side and Bo just zoomed out a little bit. October was the strike on the sixth October regular six P M. city, uh, city council meeting. Uh, once again, uh, and then I guess I didn't highlight, I thought I had bolded it, the, uh.
Twenty-first is bolded.
Okay, that's the twenty-first, Heritage Commission meeting. And then the first meeting now in November, bolded the first, the third of November at five P M. Uh, I call it museum workshop, probably the lack of call it museum and parking workshop. We can make, any of those changes? We can make all of those changes, Madam Mayor? I just wanted to summarize, uh, what the city staff is proposing for the updates right now.
Uh, Mr. Booth, if I may?
Go, uh, but you have to just.
Please, um. So you have it up to? I'm sorry. It is, it's, uh. Nothing, nothing bad, I promise. So we have, uh, the six thirty P M. comp plan workshop on ten fifteen, correct? I, I am going to imagine that that comp plan workshop is going to continue on for more than that one meeting.
Yes.
So I would just like to keep that in your mind for the upcoming months. We do have a, a penciled in, end time somewhere in April. And so that only leaves us, we'll say, four good months or four good workshop plans. We might want to consider bumping into, since we're finally close in December, uh, squeezing that city here in November to get another, another workshop meeting in for the comp plan review.
But the council is not setting those meetings. You will as part of it, so.
Correct, but I, I just wanted to get it in here in the minutes, just so everybody else, because I can't talk to my work. Hell.
I think, I think you're correct. Actually, I scribbled down a note of, of getting a broader schedule out for the whole comprehensive planning or, uh, excuse me, E A R, Evaluation Appraisal Report Process. You're absolutely right.
Yes.
Mr. Zizer, we, we do need to get a, a more.
I got sorry to put it in your mind, and that, that's all this was about. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I move that we adopt the proposed changes to the twenty twenty-five agenda.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Of course you can ask.
All right. Uh, so next we have the consent agenda, uh, which is basically the first reading, uh, budget meeting, uh, minutes. And the chief council meetings that we have on the eighteen pages. I wanted to tell you.
Veritations, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Did we skip bottom none?
Do what now?
Pardon me?
No.
That was the calendar exception.
That was the calendar.
We just did that.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at twenty-six calendar under that, so I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, nevermind.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I made a motion to approve consent agenda.
Your second?
Second.
Any comments?
Um, page one hundred and sixty-one. Uh, it's number six, public hearing, first reading of the budget ordinance. I think it's just generically under consent agenda. We have the discussion there. And are you with me in that part? Do you see page one sixty-one, anyone? No.
Hold it up.
Sorry. It's, it's just that in our, our short review here, we had public comments, we had no public comments, public hearing was closed. Then we go motion to approve as amended, but I don't see a discussion about how the motion was amended.
Okay.
So we proved it as amended, but what was the amendment?
I understand what you're saying. Council, we can get into all the, the specifics of the amendment.
That, that's all I'm looking for there.
Just grabbing.
And, um, on the same page, one sixty-one, number seven, public hearing, Kasonites Airport Authority budgets. This is a real, I'm sorry. But motion was made by Councilman Ryan Knight to approve. And then it says, "Called, councilor love enough to be approved." I didn't approve it, I seconded the motion. So if we could just change approve to seconded, and then the vote comes out.
Great.
It's, it's a small thing.
Yes.
Just wanted to add.
So. So we want to have the motion to amend, our motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendments.
Yes. And I want to second my amendments.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is discussion only?
We didn't have any, I never, uh, it's, sometimes we get these, uh, place orders in agenda plus.
Okay.
Ignore that, Madam Mayor, please.
Uh, so council comments. Uh, I see here that, uh, Mr. Welch, you have a subject there and I'll go right forward.
I do?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and, um. On the, okay, this is under general discussion, I guess?
It's under, it's under council comments.
It was the issue that you asked to be put on the agenda.
Yes. Uh, and I'm not sure I would proceed with it, Rich. Can I make my motion?
Why don't you explain why you asked for the agenda?
The reason I requested this be on the agenda, I think the, uh, Mr. Booth has, um, endured in some senses of the word, um, his title as interim city manager long enough. Uh, I think he has more to prove in himself capable of doing this job. He's expressed an interest in, uh, staying in this job for a long term, lest, uh, and I offered that because there was some concern, uh, in an earlier city council meeting about anyone perceiving this job as a stepping stone. It's clear that Mr. Booth doesn't think of this job that way. He's committed, it's, it almost goes without saying, based on some of the comments and appreciation we've expressed earlier in this meeting, that he has the support of, uh, of the city council and the staff, among the staff I spoke with. Uh, every, everyone was beyond enthusiastic about hiring, uh, Mr. Booth as their permanent manager. So, uh, with that, I guess that would open up for discussion.
So let's, let's just be clear. Um, Councilman Welsh's concept was to dispense with the interim tag, dispense with going out for, uh, a job search, job advertisement.
Correct, thank you.
And to retain Mr. Booth as the permanent city manager.
Right. And as just for, uh, public's, uh, interest, uh, you and I spoke and there is no requirement in law or any other sort of requirement to go out to the, uh, to advertise a position, to, uh, interview a slate of candidates and so on. We are, uh, we are free to hire the person we feel is qualified and, and I'm proposing we do that.
Correct, the council has wide discretion in who you appoint into the various city positions.
Thank you.
Any comments?
My question would be is what changed between that June thirtieth and now? We agreed on June thirtieth, now, when I saw this on the agenda, I asked, um, Wendy to pull the minutes. We agreed not to deal with this until December. And then we had a process. So, I mean, we publicly, we can do whatever we want in this room. We, I mean, that's clear. I just don't understand why the rush. What are we, what are we dealing with? Is there something I'm not aware of?
If, if we had decided to let this ride until December, quite honestly, I forgot.
Okay. I just, I mean, that's, that's what I was curious about. I mean, like, I mean, like you, I'm, I'm, I'm quiet. I've got plenty of things I'm going to say about hiring the city manager, but most of them deal with trying to keep the city manager from leaving, not coming here.
Right.
Um, and that was the very thing I said this to Mr. Booth, I made a secret about it, but I'm just curious. You know, I, I think it's a bad look and it opens us up to controversy if we do things out of turn and what we say. Now, you, you all can do what you want, um, but that's just my concern here. And that's why I pulled this, because we agreed to, um, we would hire him for, Mr. Booth, for a hundred and eighty days, pardon me for the last day of that. And that, uh, we would ask interim manager until December first, and we advertise the position. Now, if we need to do something to keep that for lapse, then we can certainly do that. And that we would, by January, do something. Now, if you guys want to do something different, but I just wanted to make sure there's something I'm not aware of we're going down here that I don't know about.
Nothing that I'm aware of, I guess it was just my sense that there is no reason to continually suspense, if you will. I, quite honestly, I've said forgotten about the hundred and eighty days. I do recall, uh, Mr. Commando interjecting, uh, from, from the tele, from the telephone during that meeting that the city manager was in that role position. And, and in that sense, the term interim really had no meaning. There's no value in, in, in calling this position an interim, uh, city manager.
I, I completely agree. My, my usage of that word should not be construed any other way than what is, what is stated in the document. Just one clarification.
Um, I'm, I'm so pleased with our city manager. And, um, I think it would be a waste of time. I don't see myself selecting anyone else. Um, and, and so therefore, although I appreciate the process and saying we wait till December first, and maybe we should, but as far as going through a process of posting an ad and entering con, I, I don't, I don't think we should do that. I think we're, we're deciding all the, the big question is, is can we come to an agreement of terms? Now, how much benefits and pay does he want? And are we willing to, uh, pay him, uh, what, what we think is appropriate? And, and perhaps, perhaps that's what we should start to do or start to think about. And we still march toward the December first meeting.
I guess I assumed that we were doing that already.
I don't.
I think we would, we would have to, uh, I'm not going to speak out of turn, but it would be, from my position, we would need to have some discussions with Mr. Commando, list of suggestions and what contracts and everything working on. But it's just me.
So I do, I, I know the mayor's done a lot of research on this. She's got all kinds of data. I look at it a little bit differently than her, and I've got my own data on it. And perhaps her data and my data, we should share with you that we did the last time we went through this.
Yes. So just what, twenty years ago now? Twenty twenty-four? Uh, we did not have, uh, a candidate, uh, that was going to take over when this task he'd left. So we did put it out there, and I think we had, I want to say six, seven, I can't remember how many candidates. We used a specific grading criteria based on their application, because we did look at the, um, the role and, uh, based on the, um, charter, based on the, um, where we advertised for the position, all these things, and came together with criteria that we would grade that applicant on based on their application, uh, that they entered, and then also interviews, live, uh, in-person interviews. And so it was a very, um, I think, fair way to identify someone. And, um, and Mr. Van Zant was definitely our right guy based on what we had there at that time. And so it was quite a process. It took several months, uh, to do this. And now here we are. So I look at it like I could appreciate, like back in, uh, June thirtieth, when we made a decision to call it interim city manager. You know, everyone's, we have some new folks on board here, but I knew day one that Jimmy was going to be our guy. And I have been seeing things, and honestly, you have gone beyond my expectations personally, in my opinion, based on everything that you were doing to make everything happen here. I have got a step further, um, to look at, and I guess my little point is, and like you're right. Ryan, it was till December first. Well, here we are, we're not going to have a meeting in October, so we're going to have a meeting in November. So you're being paid month to month, eight thousand dollars a month, which is equivalent to the, uh, ninety-six thousand dollars a year, based on my math here. And, um, but you're not necessarily on a contract. It's on a hundred and eighty days or whatever. I couldn't find a copy of the contract, am I correct?
There's no contract.
There's no contract. Huh?
There's no contract because he's interim.
Correct. So the thing is, again, we want to embrace the person who's in this role, and we want to keep him in this role. The way to do it professionally is to go into a contract. And, um, so that's what my position would be, would be to, you're going to be formal city manager under a contract, have a set salary. I did some research on the salaries as they are today. To my surprise, I was really pleased with how I matched up. Um, so I guess when we get to the point of doing the contract. So I guess when we get to the point of doing the contract, say by December 1st, because that's the 180 days, like you mentioned, then we would go into, we'd just review the contract and make sure it's what we want, agree on. Is that a proper process, Rich?
That's fine. We can do whatever we want.
Do whatever we want.
I, I just look at the 180 days as like a charlie run. You could stop if you hired somebody, you had your own, like, when I was a district manager, if you found somebody you liked and you wanna keep them.
Go for it.
So my introduction to motion in June, on June 30th, was because, quite frankly, we had multiple people who have expressed interest in the role. We all, at least unless I was on another planet, we sat through a very interesting meeting on June 30th. There was a lot of emotions. You know, Rich, I, I think the motion in retrospect might have been ill, ill drafted by me in the moment, because it didn't allow for this very type of transition. But my personal assumption was, is that we would have a process where we would entertain applicants and things. And I've gotta tell you, I've made a butt of a clear multiple meetings from Mr. Booth and others, I think he does a great job. But as was my concern with the perception of June, my concern remains the same. So I'm going to abstain from whatever vote takes place tonight on it, and if anything happens tonight, I plan to abstain. You just need to know that. And I do, but I do think we, I think we ought to, you know, allow that process to work out, but if we are not going to entertain others, then certainly my only request would be that we work with our attorney to do everything we can to make it difficult for Mr. Booth to leave suddenly. And I do that with all due respect, I will make it very difficult on you. Charlie got away, I have, I've been looking for him for a while, just saw him the other day, and he ran the other way. I plan on, you know, making it difficult on you to leave if you are in that position. So you need to know that anyway, so I'm gonna make it very hard on you, if I can, because I think that multiple cities will be attempting to hire you. So I'll say that.
Well, I know for a fact, I mean, you get a good city manager, you gotta hold on to him. Because where we are today, I mean, we've had some really good success in the last almost two years now, Charlie did a great job. But now it's just going up, it's just getting elevated every single day. And I'll tell you, get that momentum going, you just can't let it go, you've gotta hold on to it, and you gotta protect it. And just all the mayors I talked to, I mean, I can't believe how many city managers some of these cities have been through in six months. I mean, that guy dropped Charlie, that guy was eight months ago, he was in the role. So I, I just wanna secure the fact that we own you.
There's a little benefit there.
She didn't mean it.
I was gonna say, I'm the first wife I've ever had.
I just wanna make sure that we are taking care of you. And I do wanna say this, today I did look at salaries. And right now, before the salary, median range for a city manager is $159,000 to $238,000 a year. I looked at talent.com, there's was $81,250, hayscale.com is $96,186, and salary.com was $114,256. What I decided to do is take the lower three numbers and average them, and divide them out to figure out what their average for an annual salary would be, was $97,230. When I look at your salary at $96,000, and Charlie was around 80 something, I believe, if we take your salary and give you the 3% CPI that we're gonna give Charlie, because Charlie deserved it, he didn't get the opportunity to get it, it really comes out to $98,888 a year. Which I think is pretty, and is close to the other salary research that I did. But that would be what I would propose contractually.
Madam Mayor, can I suggest we put this on our November agenda?
Absolutely.
And then all of us bring our thoughts. And you, if you can, you can talk to us individually about what you would like.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Probably better if you did individually rather than in public.
Nothing more often than talking about your salary in public.
Well, and in the past, I mean, I'm trying to interject myself into this because I have plenty of work to do. Usually you communicate with me so that I can try to balance out kind of what the range is, because it's not always, not everybody agrees, and some people do salary surveys based on the size of the city, not just what the general amount is. Not to hang away from Mr. Booth, just, that's been the past process to try to make it a little easier to synthesize for you.
I only wanna talk to the cities right about it.
Okay.
No, no, no offense.
I mean, traditionally, that's how the negotiations happen.
All right.
All right, so we wanna have a motion, put this on the November?
You can just revise the census and your articles.
Just get him on the contracts on the I like his family too, so.
Lord involves some heavy chains.
So you all have any other comments you wanna share from your, this past month? Yes, Mr. Dean?
So first, I'd like to thank Ms. Bell, the Fall Festival was outstanding. Thank you so much for all the hard work on that. I also ran into a couple of constituents, and they said, I wanna hear more about your market stalls, I wanna hear more about your Christmas stalls. And so I'm going, because we have a, a, two new members on the council here, I want to reengage with you. I want to try to convince you that we should put some permanent structures, not these pop-up tents, or semi-permanent structures, all over theme park. And that we can have more robust festivals, fall festivals, Christmas festivals, so forth and so on. And so I'm going to ask for some time at the November meeting. And I would also, I'm probably gonna make a motion to ask for some money. I wanna buy some stuff, so that we can have some market stalls. I just, I thought maybe this idea would die because of how, how the council, I would say, was very kindly, they weren't mean at all, but I wouldn't say really supportive when I proposed this a year ago, two years ago, and that kind of thing. And so perhaps, it'd be different with membership this time around.
So Councilman Lowndeski, I would say that I have a visual of you there in one of those stalls in a major scene, but we'll we'll save that for, for November.
Well, I mean, a fall festival might turn into an Oktoberfest. I don't know.
We were joking with them about way to those.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I want to share, I wanna ask the city manager, actually, I received an email regarding the flags on South Lawrence Boulevard. And that they were complimentary of them, however, comma, they might cause a problem with vision for drivers and that kind of thing. And, and I have to say that in communities where I saw this happen before, the flags were smaller and not as tall, and so therefore not as obstru- obtrusive. Have you received an email from many of our citizens about this?
I did, from one citizen, the concern was not necessarily vehicular visibility, but more that the flags may be coming across the sidewalks and, you know, catching someone in the face. That was the, the issue that was brought up.
Are you working on this?
Ah, no, sir, I was working on the budget. But, but I did have an intention to speak with, quote unquote, just to look at potentially locating more of them off, potentially further off the sidewalks, to get that offset off the sidewalks, or more center of, not the median, but the, it's called the utility strip, just to reduce that, that flapping in the sidewalk area.
Okay, just didn't want it to be dropped or forgotten?
Yes.
Okay, great. And lastly, I just want to share that I received an email regarding the museum and a request for our support regarding their classification. And I kindly responded that they're not in the city of Keystone Heights, and that I didn't feel like I was in a position where I could do anything to help them out. It is in Clay County, and if they need some kind of rezoning, some kind of redesignation in order to change what the museum they're planning for to be, that I could not go in front of the county board of commissioners on their behalf. I, I appreciate them, I think what they're doing is wonderful, but they're not part of the city of Keystone Heights, and they're not my constituents, and I, I can't use any more political capital than I've already used. I need to support the city, and I need to support my council members, and we need to move forward. I just wanted to share that with you. Thanks.
Any other comments?
So, yeah, I've got one, one of the issues that I raised with Mr. Booth, what was it, maybe three meetings ago now, was I had asked him to quit or to make allowance, I must say, the money's there, I don't, it was then, but to make allowance to support some of the marketing proposals that you have already had in the works, Madam Mayor. And one of those was to add some advertising in the zip codes and Google ads, other things. And so I appreciate the work that Mr. Booth has done with the chamber representative that's been working with us, and with our events coordinator and others to see those things happen. I hope they will happen, I think that would be very nice to go along with what you're doing. We discussed it our last special meeting about doing some, some things to increase civic engagement related to the Constitution, Bill of Rights, et cetera. So I hope those continue tomorrow, I'm gonna be meeting with Judson Sapp briefly, and I'll tell everyone here, and I guess he can hear it too, if someone from his staff watches this, I really have a couple of questions for him, in my time in support of the city. Number one, I wanna know why he wanted to get rid of property taxes, I wanna hear from him. Number two, I want to hear personally from him how he feels about that legislation, whether or not it's truly gonna pass, what he thinks the public will do in that. And third, I'm going to ask him for a commitment to allow Keystone Heights to be a test case if that should come to pass, that property taxes are not there, that we become a place where the state and its staff and others works with us to help us navigate that. We're gonna be on the front end of that, I'm sure other municipal's will have the same idea, maybe. But I, I do want us to be at the forefront of that as a community, because as we've seen with the truth and village process, it's extremely complex. One of the things that I was told is, you know, if we have a business in town, that due to everything you guys are doing, and we're proposing here and it's going on, if they were to triple their revenue, we can't quantify in every case that that means more tax dollars coming to our community. And that's a problem, there's, there's an opaqueness there, and we take to the head, as we have in this truth and village process, even when we really dollar for dollar do, we, we don't increase anything that way, but the rate suggests. So that's, that's kind of, that's what I'm gonna say tomorrow, total transparency, I want everybody in the room to know what I'm gonna ask them, and that's, that's really about it from that standpoint. So I really appreciate the work that everyone's done in doing.
Can you share with us his responses?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know if you guys are gonna meet with what you're gonna ask him, but I did want you to all know what I'm going to ask him. And, you know, because I am, that, that's one of my concerns, and I told Mr. Booth that as well, that we, we need good partnership with the state, we need good partnership with the staff, and if this should come to pass, especially with some of the infrastructure projects we have, we're, we're going to need, you know, how to navigate it. I just would propose budget changes that they're in the meeting.
Well, by navigating, you mean where else are we gonna get the money?
Oh, yeah, I, I think they'll help us, I mean, asking, you know, whether it was a legal law that we need to adjust our, our center to, you know, to, I mean, our center or so, I sure, surely they, to do this, would make a law and not help us to force that law.
You don't suppose?
No, 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 they have our best interests in mind, always.
I have a couple of comments. So in August, I attended the Florida League of Mayors meeting in Orlando, and also the training and education. I'm on the board, I got re-elected to the Board of Directors, I'm sorry, to the Florida League of Mayors Board of Directors through 2027 now. But I also attended our education training event. The Florida League of Mayors meeting shared with us an economic specialist who is gonna take our zip code, and we're gonna have a call with this individual, and talks about what our potential for growth is economically here in this area. So they do like the software thing, and they expand and tell us exactly what's here and what's coming. It was really interesting that they shared what is the top number of placements in the United States for these individual brick and mortars in the United States business? In a restaurant, in a restaurant, whatever, turn out the Dollar Tree, the Dollar Stores, General Dollar Stores, another 837 of them are being placed in the United States. So they have that kind of data, and they can do it in our area. And I will be entertaining, send a call, we've been calling next couple of weeks. Next, we attended the economic, economic, I don't know what we call it, meeting, development yes, again, talks to us about what's going on, what's coming, I think we have one coming up toward the end, make it two weeks or so, something like that. I attended the, also the pinnacle of rhythm and cutting, which I'm so proud of, of course, I absolutely, so we can't wait to see the tennis court get going as well. Things that I have coming is, I have been talking about this for a while, I already accomplished, you know, two businesses, about 72 or so businesses in the CRA area, district, that I'm gonna have to face more and more with them, about sharing our strategic plan with them, give them a copy of it, showing them the resources in this building, our weather titles, how to contact them, how to navigate our website, how to reach the sheriff's office in a unique need, just basically share with them things that they may not have heard about, plus the copy of comments that Drew has recently, recently launched. Just wanna make sure they know all the things we're doing to work with them. And also, I'll be doing a survey with them, identifying five different areas that a rural, small-town America needs, be in parking, employment, finding employees, things like that. I'm gonna ask them to rate those five items, five being the most important to them, and then also to isolate one thing in their mind, hide in the sky something that they want. And then I hope by the November meeting, I could come back and share all of that data with you all. So I think it helps us to kind of zero in more on what they're telling us and what they want to see us do. Hopefully it'll be good information to share. Also, I'll be meeting Mr. Sapp tomorrow morning, and I will be talking with him exactly about the same thing you just mentioned, but I will also do pictorial type examples of, so that kind of money that comes from funds for CRA that's provided, you know, with our taxes, these are things that we've been able to accomplish. This is what it looked like before, this is what it looks like today. How are you specifically going to tackle that money replacing those funds? I know he is on the, on the Oversight Committee or something like that, if I'm not mistaken.
And he has a plan?
He has, I think he has a plan on this.
I know for a fact he's got one.
Okay, I, I'm really interested to see it, because I, I really want him to monetize specifics on what that looks like, because I don't know if anybody's seen anything on it yet. So anyway, that, I will make it there, Ryan. That's it for me.
I just thought of one more thing. I recently talked to members of the library, and I jokingly asked them, so when are you getting a new building? And they said, they're working on it. And so that, that set off a bunch of alarm bells in my head, because one of the things that I would like to see, now this is my vision, is a government complex. City Hall, library, Department of Motor Vehicles, Sheriff's Office, property tax collector, those types of things, all in one complex. And Mr. Joe Wiggins has said that his property off of Fox Run is a possible location for such a complex, because we don't have the size of property here in the downtown area that we would need to do that. But the reason it set off alarm bells is that if we don't get on this train, while the county is thinking about spending money for a new library, we will miss our opportunity.
Just for clarification, they're, they're willing to do something here with our library?
They have not decided yet. Right now, they're only thinking with, it's their library, actually.
Well, you know what I mean, yeah.
But that's all they're looking at, because nobody has talked to them about anything else. And if you look at some of the other libraries in the county, they're really nice. We look like third world compared to these meetings. So I just want to encourage this council, please do something, otherwise we miss the vote.
I have a question. Can you just do one quick clarification? I did follow up with him and asked, hey, what are you talking about, new library? My understanding is they're talking about the new library, Oakleaf, is the potential new library for the county, that seemed to be backed up when the Assistant County Manager of briefed, they're looking at a new library at Oakleaf. And then I went, I went over here next door and asked the folks a couple of days ago, hey, are you tracking anything new in Keystone Heights? Uh, and they did. Now, that was just the two people sitting at the desk, I don't know if they were management or not, uh, but I, I, I suspect with the person that was sitting out here, uh, at, at Fall Festival, I think they were referring to the Oakleaf location.
That was my misunderstanding.
Uh, I, it, it could be, I just, I may have talked to a different person, but.
Okay.
Alright, so I've had a lot of coffee, I'm a biblio file, you described the library as third world, you're going to have me up this evening, man. So I'm, I'm, uh, anyway. Uh, Mr. Booth, I do have a question. Do you anticipate anything, uh, coming before the council relating to the planning and zoning board in future meetings?
November seventeenth, the follow-ups of the planning and zoning board had a meeting a week ago, I've lost track, uh, where they considered and, uh, made a recommendation not, uh, for the city council not to approve a, a rezoning, a, a future land use change in rezoning. Uh, that is a recommendation of the planning and zoning committee to the city council. And since our next city council meeting will be the seventeenth of November, uh, we will advertise, they'll advertise that action and it will come before you in a public hearing for the city council's decision on that, uh, rezon-, uh, future land use change in rezoning on commercial circles.
And all council members have gotten an email from the applicant, as I was talking about that. So obviously don't talk to each other, don't reply all to that.
Right. Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are we good? Alright?
Nothing to add?
Oh, go ahead.
Just, uh, I know, we, we didn't put it on there, just do a quick update. I, I do need to ask the city council if you would like, I've been invited to attend a rural economic development, um, conference in Ocala. This is, uh, coordinated by Jeff, Mr. Jeff Hendry that we know with the, uh, Florida Institute of Governance, I think it is, under FSU. Uh, it's, uh, it's right before Thanksgiving, three days. I would, if the city council wants me to attend, it's a, I think it's a five-hundred-dollar conference fee. I would commute back and forth and it wouldn't be, uh, significant travel expenses, uh, but I did want to bring that in front of you just to see if there's consensus or not. Um, if you'd like, uh, if I could attend, I did build it into the budget.
Where, where's the conference?
Ocala.
To the horse race.
Yes, ma'am, that's the one.
Okay. I'm going to take notes.
Okay.
I, I think you have a good, make sure we don't miss out on some.
Can't find some more grants, or not keep. Uh, just to announce, Luke, our, our muralist, did complete the mural yesterday, I believe, put the two coats of varnish on it, so technically it's done, we still need to cut the ribbon. We're looking at the goo on the boulevard, uh, but the, the mural is complete. And so I just want to announce that, it looks pretty amazing.
It's amazing.
So appreciate everybody that's worked on it.
When's the next one? I want to know when the next one is.
The last one does get back to, uh, Representative Sapp coming tomorrow. We did think we were going to have him from nine to eleven. I just, I got an update today from the staff that we're only going to have him from ten to eleven. That would really only make the two time slots, the two half-hour time slots, um.
What were we saying for you, Ryan?
The ten to ten-thirty, but I won't take all that time, I just have a couple of quick questions.
Do eleven or whatever.
That would be.
Okay, we're staying.
Well, we, I was going to say, we, we can't book the other room with him like that, so we might try and tag them. That's one.
So you want to do ten?
Uh, if you don't mind.
That's fine. And then you want me to do ten-thirty?
Roughly sometime after councilman night's done, but roughly ten-thirty.
Alright.
And then he has it at part at eleven, so he gets ready for the, uh, the joint, oh my gosh, delegation that happens.
Yeah, something.
And in Big Oak Springs. So that, that was all I had. Rich, anything?
Only that the mural looks great. I love seeing it from there.
Thank you.